We can all rise for the pledge. Thank you. If you could lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence for the men and women in the armed forces, our first responders, those fighting a good fight in the Ukraine, our veterans, and those suffering from the military conflict. We also pay homage to those that passed away, the one person and the six wounded in the Lincoln University shooting, and also may we remember an Milford High School student, Noella Renee Camacho, seventeen. She passed away on October 20th after a courageous two-year battle with metastatic carcinoma cancer. May her memory be eternal. Can you say the American creed again?
Yes. America's Creed by William Tyler Page. I believe in the United States of America as a government of the people, by the people, for the people, whose just powers are derived from the consent of the governed. A democracy and a republic, a sovereign nation of many sovereign states, a perfect union, one and inseparable, established upon those principles of freedom, equality, justice, and humanity, for which American patriots sacrificed their lives and fortunes. I therefore believe it is my duty to love it, to support its constitution, to obey its laws, to respect its flag, and defend it against all enemies.
Thank you, everyone. Sal?
Hi, everyone. Jackie Eden, Redwood Lane, New Milford. My husband and I have lived here for twenty-three years. I work a busy, full-time job, take care of my disabled sister, and we visit our granddaughters whenever we can. I am the volunteer team lead of the Indivisible Group Act Local, Northwest Connecticut. We volunteer for democracy and rally every week. The October 18th No Kings Rally in town was no different, except we had thirteen hundred people this time who joined over seven million Americans who volunteered their time for democracy nationwide. ACT Local has eight hundred and thirty-four members from mostly New Milford, but also from Kent, Sherman, Brookfield, Washington, and some further like Bethel, Southbury, and Oxford. For No Kings, we ate breakfast and visited the farmer's market before the rally, and filled the restaurants and shopped after the rally. We collected two large boxes of food for the New Milford Food Pantry and big bags of candy for trunk and treat. After the rally, Councilman Tom Esposito made false and hateful public comments on social media. His remarks about me and our group are not only offensive, but they're unethical. As elected officials, don't our council members have a duty to be truthful and to uphold civic trust and not to spread conspiracy theories? Councilman Esposito's words repeated the hateful and divisive rhetoric coming from Washington, almost exactly quoted. I was introduced to Tom years ago by one of my festival crew members, and we briefly explored bringing a festival here to New Milford. Shortly thereafter, Tom forwarded me a bigoted, Islamophobic, and any potential relationship ended right there. The email contents will be shared later and submitted for public record. So, why do we protest every week and why do we do it freely, joyfully, and peacefully? We are part of a nationwide mobilization of patriots who believe in the Constitution, in due process, and in peace and justice. We believe in the power of community and in the beautiful idea and dream of America. We believe that that dream is being crushed under Trump's Republican Project 2025 administration, and we have been witnessing the following trends daily in America. Powerful, one, powerful and continuing nationalism. Two, disdain for the recognition of human rights. Three, identification of enemies scapegoats as a unifying cause. Four, supremacy of the military. Five, rampant sexism. Six, controlled mass media. Seven, obsession with national security. Eight, religion and government intertwined. Nine, corporate power protected. Ten, labor power suppressed. Eleven, disdain for intellectuals and the arts. Twelve, obsession with crime and punishment. Thirteen, rampant cronyism and corruption. And fourteen, fraudulent elections, the use of legislation to control voting numbers or political district boundaries, and judiciaries to manipulate or control elections. That should sound familiar to all of us. So that is why we are out in the streets for free, by the millions, and why I use my precious time to make these comments, because there is nothing more local than the rise of fascism at home.
I'm Rabbi Ari Rosenberg, Sixth Taylor Street, Executive Director of the Association of Religious Communities, founding board member of New Milford Refugee Resettlement, and Democratic candidate for town council. I'm here to voice my concerns over the statements made by Councilman Thomas Esposito, which are part of a pattern of behavior that has no place in New Milford. I attended the No Kings Rally here just a few weeks ago along with my wife, several members of my extended family. It was a joyous occasion in which people dressed in festive costumes, carried American flags, and sang such songs as "God Bless America" and "The Star-Spangled Banner." As maybe a thousand of us marched up the town green, I remember noting how many of the faces were familiar to me. I remember seeing my doctor, and my veterinarian was there, and my daughter's public school teacher was there as well. I can assure you, none of us were paid a penny to do this. We were all there to celebrate this country and the town that we love. And we were also there to express our concerns over a national campaign to take away health care, SNAP benefits, and homeless vouchers, to weaponize ICE and the National Guard against citizens, our friends, and our neighbors. They say, "Think globally, act locally," and so did about seven million of us across the country. They also say local politics is totally different from national politics. And that is why I was so astonished to see the reports on the Facebook post of Councilman Thomas Esposito giving voice to the conspiracy theories one might expect from Donald Trump. The good people of this town don't want that ugly national campaign here. You don't hear... You don't hear good people like Mayor Pete Bass or Katie Francis using that kind of rhetoric. You also don't hear them claiming that out-of-town visitors are bad for local business, as Esposito did, ridiculous as that sounds. If Councilman Esposito were to express remorse and regret for his slander and libel, perhaps that would be one thing. I believe in redemption and also forgiveness, but I have received evidence that this is part of a pattern of behavior that goes back decades. Let me share a few excerpts from an email he wrote in 2008 with disturbingly bigoted statements about Muslims. Councilman Esposito asks, "How many have you met that were open to the idea of freedom and people's rights, especially women's rights?" Personally, I would answer that through New Milford Refugee Resettlement, we have brought twenty-three legal Muslim Afghan refugees to this town, and one hundred percent of them believe in freedom, human rights, and women's rights. Councilmember Esposito goes on to say, "They don't have these freedoms or enjoyments because their leaders are crazy extremists who want their people to stay stupid and arrogant. They deny that the Holocaust happened." To this, I say that not one of the many Muslim friends that I have made through the Association of Religious Communities denies that the Holocaust ever happened. And the only crazy extremist who wants their people to stay stupid and arrogant is Donald Trump, who nominated Holocaust deniers, who nominated Holocaust deniers Paul Ingracchia, Nick Fuentes, Andrew Tate, Cash Patel, and others. And when Nazis violently marched in Charlottesville, Trump said there were very fine people among them. His 2017 Holocaust Remembrance Day statement didn't even mention the Jewish people. So don't tell me about crazy extremists who want their people to stay stupid. Councilman Esposito goes on to say of Muslims, "That their culture is the only on this earth that wants to kill us, Christians, Jews, Hindus, and they have done it many times." To this, I say, from a Jewish perspective, far more Jews have perished at the hands of Christians than at the hands of Muslims, and far more Christians, and far more Christians have perished at the hands of Christians than at the hands of Muslims. I might be one of very few people in this room who has spent a lot of time in mosques and masjids, in the Muslim community, and I can tell you that I have never heard anyone call for the death of Christians, Jews, or Hindus. Are there Muslim extremists in the world? Sure, but not as many as there are white nationalist extremists. Jim Dugan sees his time. But not as many as there are white nationalist extremists who pose a vastly greater threat to America and Europe, at least if you believe the CIA. Councilman Esposito writes, "They killed a lot of my friends in the World Trade Center, so my compassion for them is gone." Yes, about a dozen Muslim extremists tragically killed three thousand people at the World Trade Center, but the vast majority of Muslims in America and across the planet condemned that. And then the United States killed three hundred thousand Muslims in Iraq, despite the fact that they had nothing to do with the World Trade Center and possessed no weapons of mass destruction. And yet every Muslim I have ever met wants nothing more than peace. Please enter, please enter this email dated May 13th, 2008 into the public record for this meeting. These statements by Councilman Esposito reveal his bigoted racist positions, and I am here to say they will not be tolerated in New Milford. Thank you.
I wasn't in New Milford on the No Kings Rally. Irene Scravilo, 205 Pumpkin Hill Road. I wasn't in New Milford for the No Kings Rally. I was in Charlottesville, where the governor was threatening to send the National Guard. So I guess I should be getting combat pay. I'd like to know if I should be expecting a 1099 or a W-2, but Mr. Esposito is not here to answer my question. By the way, there were ten thousand people in attendance at Charlottesville and no arrests. There were a couple of cops on bicycles, because their police chief asked the governor not to send the National Guard. Make no mistake, this was not a January 6th riot. This was a hate, not a hate America, but a love America rally. So why do we protest? A hundred and seventy citizens were detained by ICE. Twenty were held for more than a day. They were detained, denied legal counsel according to the Sixth Amendment. Three of those citizen detainees were pregnant. Trump acts as if he's a ruler with no regard for the laws of the land. On Meet the Press, he said, "I don't know if the president has to uphold the Constitution." I think most sixth graders can answer that correctly. POTUS signed an order doing away with birthright citizenship. This is literally in the Constitution. It's the Fourteenth Amendment. It's as if this man has not read the damn paper. Implementation of tariffs without congressional approval, this is illegal according to the Anti-Deficiency Act. He's detained students for op-eds he dislikes. The First Amendment must be new to him. Most notably, Mahmoud Khalil of Columbia University is a Palestinian born in Syria. He's married to a U.S. citizen and is a Ph.D. student at Columbia. He's also a Muslim. He was detained. There are other examples. Trump has taken funds from Congress that had been earmarked and reallocated them for ICE without approval. He's pardoned January 6th criminals, George Santos and Changpeng Zhao, his crypto czar, and other shady characters. He's fired the inspector generals who have investigated his friends like Elon Musk. He's making millions on crypto scams using his office as a springboard. His family is brokering deals all around the world using the former prestige of the U.S. as selling points. Trump has even defied one of three judges that have ruled against him, even judges he approved. And most recently, he bought an election in Argentina for $21 million. He told Argentina they would not get the money unless they elected their crooked president. And guess what? He's tearing down the White House, literally and figuratively, without consulting the National Park Service, the National Planning Commission, or the OMB, Office of Management and Budget. It's not his house. That's our house, and he's tearing it down along with the country and our way of life and our freedom. This is why people were protesting, not for money but love of country. If Mr. Esposito was here, I'd ask him, "Why wasn't he with us? Is he okay with what I just described?" And I would invite him and all of you to come join us, either on East Street or on the Green, and talk to your constituents and find out what concerned citizens are feeling that is happening on the national level. And not to make up nonsense and repeat fake propaganda that you read on, I'm not sure where he got it. Rumble, I have no idea. On a different note, eight hundred families in New Milford are poised to lose SNAP benefits in four days because Speaker Johnson will not call Congress back into session. The state cannot put money on EBT cars. And I'm really kind of wondering what New Milford is going to do about this. That's eight hundred families that are going to go hungry in the next couple of days. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Christine Gordon. I live in Sherman, Connecticut, 194... 194 Route 37 South, Sherman, Connecticut. I came to New Milford because it was where I could go to exercise my right to protest. I'm a fact checker by trade. I'm a journalist, but today I want to speak to you from my heart, not only of the facts. I appreciate those of you who are looking at me and giving me your attention, because I came here tonight of my own time, just like I did when I protested. I have to tell you, it was the honor of my life to protest and to still have that freedom in our country. I hope we always have that freedom. I know you can relate to what I'm saying, even if you're a Republican. And I think the only other thing I want to say is, I couldn't help but do some research. And what I found was, I went to your page, the New Milford Republican page, and I saw the words on Mr. Esposito's page, which said, "Believe we need to move forward with civility. We need an inclusive, open dialogue." This is his About page. I don't know when it was put up. But what I saw in his Facebook notice or note was that the people that went to protest, that it was a stunt, a false narrative. He used the word pathetic. He said, "We wanted attention for our failing cause. Our failing cause is your cause. We're Americans. We want to be free. We want to be led by a president, not a dictator, by a Senate and a House of Representatives that works together and represents us all. If you're a Republican, I still need you to represent me as a Democrat. You're my neighbor. I'm in Sherman. You're not really my representatives." But I need you, I need you to be a good neighbor and do what's right and follow your conscience and not this crazy man at the top. The last thing I want to say is, if Mr. Esposito was here, and I'm glad this is going on the record, because my question for him is, are you going to continue to attack us as we continue to protest? Or will you be civil, as your About page says you will? If not, take down the About page. Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. I hope our country goes in the right direction. I hope we can meet again, and these meetings are never canceled.
Mike Graff. I'm not sure what the first name is. Mike Graff? Rich? Yes, yes, yes. Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Rich McGrath. I've been in New Milford for about fifty years. I'm a veteran and a proud community member and a proud protester, unpaid. I just want to say that I think that Mr. Esposito's absence here tonight, he is absent, am I right? I think it's very MAGA. And I mean that sincerely. I'd like to know, I don't know if this is allowed, but can I ask, are there any MAGAs on the board? Nobody on the board is MAGA? No, I think they would. I don't think any MAGA is ashamed of that unless they're confronted. So listen, all I want to say is, I'm protesting. No, I want to say this first. Thank you, Jackie. Because our country's going in the wrong direction. It's going in an Esposito direction. We can't have that here. This is New Milford, for God's sakes. And you're right when you say it's the best damn town in the USA. It is. We don't need guys like that making remarks like what he made. And he needs to step back and learn a little bit. So he's a hothead. I protest mostly because I have three granddaughters. I don't have to say another word about that, because everybody here knows what's going on. That's my reason, and I'm unpaid. Thank you for this time.
There you go. I'm sorry. I couldn't read it well. Anyway, Perlowski.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Deline Perlowski, 78 Cheninsky Road, New Milford. I was at the No Kings Rally in New Milford on October 18th. I spoke briefly on the history of our Constitution and the Bill of Rights. Imagine my disappointment to read that one of our local New Milford council members posted some untrue and negative rhetoric on Facebook regarding the members of the rally. All elected representatives, all elected become representatives for their constitutes in their district. That means everyone, Democrat, Republican, independent, even those that don't vote. I want my representatives to understand the Constitution, to honor the Bill of Rights, and to believe in the rule of law. I want a representative who wants to make New Milford the best it can be. I am a voter. I do not vote for a party. I vote for fair-minded representation. And I do vote. And I do vote. Thank you for listening.
Good evening. My name is Gina Romano. I live in Sherman, Connecticut, One Terrace Drive. I'm a huge fan of New Milford. Sherman is boring. I attended the protest on October 18th, and I swear on my children, I was not paid. I want to read an email that someone who attended the protest sent us but could not be here tonight. "Thank you all for all you do. The No Kings Rally in New Milford was my first rally, and I was very impressed. It was organized, positive, safe, and it was refreshing to be surrounded by others who are as concerned as I am. I will try to get to the meeting tonight, but may be running late. I do hope that it is pointed out that it was a perfect opportunity for those that are on the ballot to come and meet some of their constituents and ask them what their concerns are, to find out what motivated them to come out on a gorgeous Saturday afternoon to join the nationwide movement. Definitely a missed opportunity. I hope to see you tonight." And I just have a question. So I understand some of you are Republicans, you're conservative. I understand that. I may not agree with you, but that's okay. It's okay. We all have different opinions, and it's majority rule. Maybe dictatorship is your gig. I don't know. That's okay, too. If that's your thing, it's majority rule. But what's with the cruelty? How can you support this kind of cruelty? Like, look in your hearts. Where is your humanity?
Hi, my name's Kathy Conroy. I live 31 Old Farms Lane, New Milford. I'm a veteran, a very proud veteran. And I totally believe in democracy, and I feel that it's been taken away, and I'm concerned. It's not in a secure, I don't feel that it's secure at this time. I didn't attend the No Kings Rally. I would have liked to have, but I couldn't. I have never received anything for participating in the very peaceful rally. And I have a letter that Mark Edwards wrote that he wasn't able to make it, so I'm going to read it for him, if that's all right. "To whom it may concern, my name is Mark Edwards with my residence at 65 West Street, New Milford, Connecticut. I have written this letter to serve as an affidavit with the declaration that I attended the No Kings Rally at New Milford Green on October 18th, 2025, to serve in peaceful protest against the authoritarian rule of our president and his administration." against the authoritarian rule of our president and his administration. The attendance at aforementioned rally was made without compensation, freely, without coercion, as other rallies I have attended in this town since 7/5/2025. Please accept this affidavit in place of my attendance due to my employment obligation. In solidarity, Mark W. Edwards.
Dr. Mark May?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dr. Mark Davis, 27 Barnes Hill Road. As part of the nationwide No Kings Rally on October 18th, my wife and I, along with over 1,400 others, joyously exercised our constitutional First Amendment rights to peaceably assemble and speak freely on the New Milford Town Green. In doing so, we joined millions of other people across the United States with whom we share a deep love of country and its constitutional ideals, as well as profound concerns about the destructive, divisive, and disenfranchising policies of our duly-elected president, whom I will remind you was not elected by any so-called mandate, but with only a 1.5% popular vote margin out of over more than 155 million votes cast. I'm here this evening to disabuse Mr. Esposito and others of a popular misconception which appeared in a recent Facebook post ostensibly made by him, that, quote, "Many at the New Milford Rally on the 18th were, quote, 'paid protesters.'" In making his post, he too was exercising his First Amendment right to free speech by voicing his opinion. However, let us be reminded that while we are all entitled to our opinions, we are not entitled to our own facts. Like so much of the information which flows unchecked and unverified across the unregulated social media landscape, the assertion that, quote, "Many protesters are paid," strange credulity in minds adept in critical thinking. In fact, it doesn't even pass the proverbial smell test. We should note that Mr. Esposito does not provide any corroborative or verifiable data to support his claim about protesters being paid. For example, perhaps Mr. Esposito, sadly not here, can share with us in the future how many of the protesters were paid? Who paid them? How much were they paid? I didn't get anything. How was his information substantiated and confirmed? Sadly, Mr. Esposito, like millions of others, has fallen deeply into the social media fire pit of disinformation, where opinions voiced without substantiation become so-called "facts," when repeated ad infinitum by malign actors and those devoid of critical thinking skills. Arguably, the worst offenders are those in elected positions of leadership who purport to represent the interests of all the citizens of their communities and the nation, yet perpetuate social media fallacies and outright lies that serve only to inflame and divide us. We expect our leaders to be paragons of integrity and inclusiveness, who seek to bring us together, work through our differences, and find compromise while treating everyone respectfully along the way. Left, right, Democrat, Republican, whatever, it doesn't matter. Let's all look for opportunities to get off the social media merry-go-round and talk with, and more importantly, listen to each other for a change, in this case, a change for the better. I thank you.
I really have a hard time to read Nancy, or someone like that?
Brittingham?
Probably, yes. Yeah, go ahead.
I thought Brittingham.
Yeah, I don't know, good shirt. So thanks for helping out.
Hi, I'm Nancy Brittingham, 41 West Street, 201B. Well, can you hear me now?
My phone only goes into the camera. You just have to speak louder for the room to hear.
I don't even, okay, okay. I'm Nancy Brittingham, 41 West Street, New Milford, Connecticut. And I was not at the No Kings Day this time, but I've been out on the green most Saturdays. This is my sign: support the Constitution. I find it hard to believe that anybody could drive by and have a problem with this. And if they do, I think that they should rethink who the real enemy, who the enemy is in America. Thank you.
(applause)
Michaelis, or someone?
Nicholas.
Yes, yes. I followed you.
Hi, I'm the Reverend Dr. Pat Nicholas, 6 Lamplighter Lane. And I join others here tonight to say that I participated in the very peaceful protest on the green on October 18th with my family, my friends, and my neighbors. I was not paid. I'm not from out of town. I've lived in New Milford for 55 years. I'm also proud to be part of the group that gathers every Saturday to stand up and speak out about the rights we are losing and the destruction of our democracy in this country. One of the signs that I often hold up is protect free speech. As Americans, we have the right to speak our minds. At least, we still do right now. We're even free to lie.
Really?
But that kind of talk also has consequences. And those who are attacked with lies, threats, or derogatory comments have the right to truth, accountability, and in the best case, a sincere apology. Now, for that reason, and for all of the reasons that were voiced tonight, I will continue to stand up and speak out to protect our rights, including the right of free speech. I'll see you out on the green on Saturday.
Adrian?
Hi, there. Adrian Vigil, Kern, 76 Second Hill Road. And first, total introvert, so those people that have those signs, even the introverts are coming out, that would be me. I was there. I was also a peacekeeper, just to keep track of people, so I didn't even have a sign that day, but there was no payment. But I have a letter here from Teresa in Nicholas, Halco. The subject was "Dismayed and Disappointed." Dear Members of New Milford Town Council, my husband and I have enjoyed the wonders of this corner of Connecticut for many decades. We are pleased to be able to support neighboring communities as well as our own. Shopping and/or dining in New Milford is a favorite of ours. It has a plethora of interesting small businesses, delicious dining opportunities, fabulous farms, as well as a terrific farmer's market on the green that offers charm, history, and a true sense of community. The library is a true gem. We have been coming more regularly to enjoy the farmer's market, as well as to participate with our fellow citizens to protest peacefully every Saturday. Each weekend that we come, we average spending a minimum of 150 between the market and local businesses. We have always found the people to be friendly, approachable, and contributors to the wonderful vibe of the town. Imagine our dismay and disappointment that one of your council members has been spreading negative and untruthful information about the folks who participated in these protests. We understand that everyone is entitled to their opinions, but a council member using a platform to spread untruths, calling us pathetic, and complaining that we hurt businesses is disturbing. Additionally, to suggest that we get paid could be considerable laughable if it wasn't so insulting. My husband and I are retired professionals who have worked hard and played by the rules. We chose, we choose to be informed and represent a growing population that does not endorse the cruel, lawless behavior of our current White House administration. We remember very well how things were in this country during the Vietnam War, women's rights and civil war struggles, and especially Watergate. If you will take note, we don't speak, we don't leave a speck of trash, we adhere to the rules with the local businesses. We work to set a positive example. Perhaps the councilman should consider doing the same. The councilman needs to apologize for his lies and distortions. Thank you for your attention to this matter, sincerely, Teresa.
(applause)
Parker Knight? One moment. There you go.
I was born here in New Milford, the daughter of a World War II veteran whose name appears on the plaque in this very building. I raised three children in this town, and I'm ideologically centrist enough to say that I voted Republican in every presidential election until 2012. I proudly attended the No Kings Rally on the green on October 18th, along with many of my family members, friends, and colleagues. I was shocked to see that a member of this council asserted on social media, without evidence and in writing, that many of the attendees were, quote, "paid protesters taking up parking all over downtown, hurting local businesses, calling it, quote, 'another stunt to get attention for the failing cause.'" He concluded by calling us pathetic. I am here to correct the record. I attended the No Kings Rally precisely because I love this country. I could go on ad nauseam about what this administration has done to undermine the rule of law and create discord, but knowing my time is limited, I will mention only a few. The president is using the Justice Department to prosecute his political enemies. He is ignoring core orders in one of every three judicial rulings against him, according to the Washington Post. He is sending billions of dollars of aid to Argentina while hard-working Americans are poised to lose essential services under H.R. 1, and he is sowing civil discord in countless ways, including posting an AI video of himself in a crown, dumping excrement on American citizens. Peaceful protests like the one on October 18th are not only protected under the First Amendment to the Constitution, they are essential in a functioning democracy. Our elected officials have a responsibility to be truthful and to serve their constituents. We expect them to uphold civil trust and not to spread baseless conspiracy theories. The claim made by Councilman Esposito is false and harmful. He should correct the record and be more mindful in the future. This type of misinformation erodes trust in our local government and hurts the community. I will close by borrowing a sentiment from Councilman Esposito's online bio. Instead of the mudslinging, perhaps it is time for us to, quote, "move forward with civility and inclusive, open dialogue." Thanks.
Suzie Hackle?
Good evening. My name is Suzie Hackle, and I live at 10 Van Carr Road. I'm a proud registered Democrat, a former teacher in the New Milford Public Schools, and a patriot who attended the No Kings Rally on October 18th, along with millions of other Americans who are peacefully standing up for our democracy and expressing concern about the direction of our country. Let me make a few things clear. No, I was not paid to attend that rally. And no, my parking spot did not take one away from someone shopping in town. The fact that a public official in this community would go on social media and spread false statements like that is deeply disheartening. It says a great deal about the character and judgment of that individual. First, on the issue of parking, let's be honest. When hundreds of out-of-towners come to Village Fair Days, the Apple Festival, the Teddy Bear Festival, or the 4th of July celebrations, no one complains. In fact, we celebrate those events and the support they bring to our local businesses. The rally was no different. Afterward, I enjoyed a meal at a local restaurant and saw many others doing the same. That's good for New Milford. But this official seemed to take offense not at parking, but who was rallying. In their mind, the people gathered that day weren't worthy of standing on the town green. That is both unfair and un-American. Roughly 1,300 people came to that event, many of them local residents like me, proud to exercise our constitutional right to assemble and speak freely. As for the accusation that participations were paid, that's simply absurd. Who exactly would be paying millions of people across the country to hold signs? The claim is baseless, and it's disappointing that an elected official would repeat such nonsense rather than verify facts. Everyone in this country has the right to their own opinion about our current administration. But when you hold public office, you have a responsibility to speak with integrity. Using your platform to spread falsehoods about your own constituents is beneath the dignity of yours constituents. It's poor judgment, and it's damaging to our community. Thank you for listening.
(applause)
John McCartney?
Hi, I'm John McCartney. I'm not from New Milford, I'm actually from New Fairfield. I'm your neighbor across the lake. But I'm not against New Milford. I actually love coming to New Milford. I love coming here for the restaurants and shopping and the events that take place here. I was here on the No Kings Rally. I was not paid. I frankly wish someone would have paid me.
(laughter)
I would have taken that money and spent more money when I had then left the rally and went nate.
There you go.
What I want to share is something that, I didn't come with written remarks, this is my first time here. I attend almost every meeting in New Fairfield, but we're much smaller than you, as you well know. One incident happened that day that I thought was really telling. We were kind of walking around and people were speaking, and a gentleman drove by very slowly in his pickup truck. You might be able to picture him driving by. He had his window up-down, and he was yelling profanities and yelling things out the window. And as he passed us, it struck me that, I'm going to guess, four or five people, I didn't count them, turned to him and almost at the same time said, "We love you." And several people flashed him the peace sign. I too am a veteran. I'm also a member of the volunteer fire department. And this is the New Milford City Council. So I'm not going to talk about national politics, because everyone else has done such an admirable job doing that. I ask you, the people that are representing the people of New Milford, here in New Milford, to think about all the time that has been wasted because of Mr. Esposito and his comments. I have never met Mr. Esposito, but I know him. He is a bully, and he likes to denigrate people. There are many people like that in this country. And it's unfortunately forcing the population to say, "Oh, I don't want to get involved in politics." And so we see the numbers drop, the numbers that participate. It's sad to me. So, the last thing I will say, and I want to thank you for allowing me to speak, I know I'm not from New Milford. I love this. I would ask, or suggest, that you add one thing to the end. As a veteran, when I left service, my pledge did not end. My father's pledge, when he left the military, did not end. It says, "And to defend against all enemies." You just need to add the words "foreign" and "domestic."
(applause)
And I'm going to guess that Mr. Esposito is one of those enemies. You have an election coming up.
So you don't live here, how can you call Mr. Esposito an enemy?
Let's be fair.
Let's be fair. Let's be fair. You don't live here. You do not live here.
Order.
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 Okay, I got a minute left.
Did that take away from my time, or?
No, you have a minute left, sir.
Okay, I just have one last thing to say.
You all focus locally. Think about your duty to all of the people that you represent in New Milford. It doesn't matter what party they are, it really doesn't even matter if they vote, unfortunately. You all focus locally. Think about your duty to all of the people that you represent in New Milford. It doesn't matter what party they are. It really doesn't even matter if they vote. Unfortunately, you still represent them. Please do that. In my opinion, having seen what Mr. Esposito espouses, he is an enemy, and he's not someone that I would ever elect or vote for.
Oh, it is. Maybe, though. Okay. Good evening, my name is Carolyn Hyde. I live at 31 Brookview Lane here in New Milford for 40-plus years, given a couple years stint up in New Preston. If any person in our country has concern or feels unhappy with an issue, they have the right to organize and advocate for the change they want to see. This is afforded to all of us under the First Amendment. Therefore, there is nothing more American than exercising this right. To call the people exercising their First Right Amendments during the No Kings Rally pathetic, as a town council member has, would be extremely un-American. It becomes even more disappointing when said town council member also promotes the spread of misinformation by stating that the rally attendees at the No Kings event in New Milford were paid to be there. These comments by Councilmember Esposito are both ridiculous and saddening. The people of New Milford deserve better. Town council members should be thoughtful, considerate, and have higher moral standards. The people at the No Kings Rally were true patriots exercising their constitutional rights, advocating for issues important to everyone: peace, justice, the rule of law, healthcare, education, voting rights, food assistance, economic issues, environmental issues, and on and on. The estimated number of attendees at the No Kings Rally was 1,300 per the New Milford Police Department. The rally was peaceful with zero incidents. The organizers of the event, Jackie and friends, asked attendees to support the downtown businesses before the rally even began, and donations were collected for the food bank. This is the type of event that should be welcomed on the village green, just like the various other events, both hosted by town, their commissions, and as well as other organizations in the community. Why protest? What matters to me as a New Milford resident who was unpaid and said to be one of the pathetic? Come October 31st, 141 Head Start programs across the United States and Puerto Rico will be losing their funding due to this shutdown. Their grants are all ending as of November 1st. It will affect 65,000 children, and that is not including the employees' children, like mine, who are three. One of those programs is located right here at the Hill and Plain School. And I'm going to get a little upset about this. And I just wanted to read the letter that we sent last week to the families. Dear Head Start families, we want to share some important information with you. You may have heard in the news that the government shutdown may impact some Head Start program funding due to funding starting November 1st. We are only promised funding through the end of October. Thank you to the support of the state of Connecticut despite what you might hear in national news. Understand that we are able to continue providing services through at least the month of November, 30 days. If the shutdown continues into December, we will continue to do our best to stay open. But there is a chance we may make some changes to our services if there is no federal funding at that time. If we do need to close some classrooms, we will give you plenty of notice, and you can be certain that we will open again as soon as the government shutdown ends. Hopefully it will not come to that. We will keep you informed every step of the way. Thank you for understanding and your support. We are here for you and your child. We are very lucky that the state of Connecticut is able to help for even a short time. Most states are not. This is not the first time we have almost seen our doors closed during this current administration, but certainly is the closest. This is actually our third. The first being when a letter was sent on behalf of the President on January 27th. That stated, "To implement orders..." Due to... There's a lot. I'm only going to read a little bit of it. "Each agency must complete a comprehensive analysis of all federal financial assistance programs to identify programs, projects, and activities that may be implicated of any of the President's executive orders. In the interim, to that extent permissible, under acceptable law, federal agencies must temporarily pause all activities related to obligation or disbursement of all federal financial assistance and any other relevant agency activities that may be implicated by executive orders, included but not limited to: financial assistance of foreign aid, non-governmental organizations, DEI, woke gender ideology, and the New Green Deal. The temporary pause will become effective January 28th." This was sent January 27th at 5:00 PM. So if you did not follow these orders, your program was going to be shut January 28th at 5:00 PM. The letter caused mass confusion and then was eventually revoked, saying, "Oh, it was an accident, it was sent," even though drawdown funds from thousands... I'm going to need a little more. ...of programs were... I'm almost there. Were frozen at the same time. How do we educate without diversity, equality, and inclusion? And again, our third time was in April. We waited for half our grant, eventually showed up a month late. If you have ever had to tell a parent of a child that their school is going to close in 30 days due to funding, be glad you have not, especially within days after being told their SNAP food benefits were also being canceled due to this federal shutdown. These are our neighbors, our friends, people who you represent. I am happy to go out and protest for them for free, just as a volunteer, my time in many organizations in New Milford, just as many familiar faces in the crowd at No Kings.
Is there somebody that would like to yield that's on the...
I have about 30 seconds. Two more. Two more seconds, honestly. I will stand up... Okay, I'm sorry. I will volunteer my time in many organizations in New Milford, just as many familiar faces in the crowd at No Kings. I will stand up for my daughters' rights so they have healthcare in the future. How is this pathetic? How can one be so cruel to not support neighbors who are in need? I will tell you what is pathetic. It is pathetic that during the shutdown, retired military working in federal prisons are told to show their military IDs to get in the front of the food lines at food banks. It is pathetic that one of my parents said no politician could be trusted and is looking for her third job to support her family. It is pathetic that some town council members are supposed to have the people's town's best interests and apparently do not. Thank you for the extra 30 seconds, and thank you for your time.
Well, the last people to sign up, Mary... No, I know your name, I know. Randolph? Go ahead. It's just you?
I am a clown.
I don't know. Can you hear me? Okay. My name's Connie Roberts. I live right across the street, 25 Church Street. And I've only lived here as of yesterday, one year, in New Milford. And I really enjoy being able to walk to everything, the library, the post office. I really have... I have participated in the School of Performing Arts years ago. That was like my second home on Bang Street. I'm getting up and speaking. I was not going to speak, but after looking at all of this, you've been hearing about the protests. And I was one who was there to protest what's going on in our country. And I too was not paid. You can see my bank account. There's no deposit in my bank account. But you've been hearing about why people here protest, their concerns about the comments, the negative comments from Mr. Esposito. I've heard about this, I didn't read it myself. And I want to ask you, what's going on in your mind right now? What are you thinking about all these comments? And what do we want you to do with this? I think that's more of the question. Is bringing this emotion and comment is one thing, but where's the productivity? What is going to come out of this? And I think a couple of things could come out of this. We're asking you not to follow the example of our administration right now and with divide vision and hatred and division, but to come together for the community, for the people in this community with your, you know, in your conscience and what you believe for our country and this community particularly, and to listen to what people want in this town and to help provide that. Thank you.
Hi. My name's Elizabeth Shab. I live at 26 Carman Hill Road in New Milford. I grew up in New Milford. I was in the first class to go through Hill and Plain School. I was in the first class to go through Scatacook. I went to school at Pettibone. I graduated from the old New Milford High School, what's now Saranoke. As a side note, I say that because I had someone come up to me and say, "Oh, you have something to say? Are you from here?" It's like, "Oh, yeah, I am from here." I, like everyone else here, I'm here to address Counselor Tom Esposito's comments on Facebook. He said horrible things, but specifically he said that the protesters on the New Milford Green for the 10-18 No Kings protest were paid, echoing baseless, far-right claims. I was one of those protesters, of many, many protesters. I was not paid. Boy, could I use that money? I was not paid. One of the many, many reasons I protest is just because of all of the hate and cruelty I see every single day. And you know what? I don't want to see it in this town. I don't want to see it in this town. I love this town, too. Those claims were ridiculous, and they were untrue. And I believe, I believe truly that you all know those claims were untrue. I was dismayed that when Mayor Bass, when you were approached by some of your constituents and you claimed ignorance, that seemed, quite frankly, disingenuous to me. I was also disappointed when I saw no comment was given when contacted by several journalists. Nevertheless, I have never seen Mayor Bass himself say anything like that himself. And for that, I applaud you. However, Councilman Esposito, as many people have already said, has repeated numerous hateful statements. These should be repudiated by this council. And by staying silent, you condone his words. I urge you to do better. I've been looking up at that sign saying "excellence in service." I would like you to stand by those words. Thank you.
Could move up and having the youth agency? Is there a... They could give a presentation? Oh, you did? I'm sorry. Mary Jane?
You are? Then go ahead. I didn't see your name, I swear to God I didn't.
Mary Jane Longren, 89, Cheniski Road. I was at the protest. I've been at the many protests every Saturday. And I stood there proudly with my husband, a Vietnam veteran, who... I stood at the rally very proudly with my Vietnam husband, who was willing to sacrifice his life for this country. He loves this country. I love this country. I love this town. I was there with many of my neighbors, Mr. Gambino's wife, the Prolowskis, another veteran. I was surrounded by several veterans who all love this country. None of us were paid. We all are there because we are very concerned about what's going on in our country. And we are there to absolutely stand up for our Constitution, the rule of law. And we will be out there every Saturday in every big protest until this is accomplished. And for Jackie, I just want to say, Jackie hasn't been a member of the Democratic Town Committee for at least six years because I was the chair and she resigned. And I don't know what else to say. I'm embarrassed by comments that were made, and I wish they had never been made. And I can't apologize for the person who made the comments, and I hope he will make amends in some way, shape, or form. Thank you.
Next, it's okay with the council if we could have the youth agency come and present? They've been waiting? Come on out.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Emma Coleman. I'm a senior at New Milford High School. And as you know, I'm here speaking on behalf of the youth agency. So, first word of business, we had our teen movie night. This was a great collaboration between the Student Advisory Board, the youth agency, and the Parks and Rec Department. Although it was a smaller turnout than last year, it ended up being a fun night for everyone. We were able to invite our local food vendors, including Rice to Meet You, Jessie's Ice Cream, and JK's Pizza. There were also students raising money to donate to the New Milford Animal Shelter by selling cookies and tickets for a 50/50 raffle. The youth agency is continuing to offer presentations and workshops to help prepare students for life after high school, whether that be college or career. We held our second college prep workshop in collaboration with the New Milford Public Library. Students learn tips and tricks when writing your college essay. We also have a two-part workshop series coming up to teach students the ins and outs of exploring careers and being ready for employment, including how to write a resume. This is on November 5th and 6th and costs only $10 for both classes. Lastly, this is the third year that the youth agency is offering the Paying for College presentation, which always gives lots of valuable information, including assistance with the FASFA. This is on November 13th. Other youth agency staff asked us to share some of their new programs with you. Our social worker, Sarah Wendrow, started a support group for parents and caregivers called A Mug and a Hug. It runs every other Friday and has been a great success. She also brought back a group called The Cozy Corner for LGBTQIA Youth and Allies. This group runs every Friday after school. In addition to creating a safe space to gather, they are also creating social events for the New Milford youth and will help plan the 2026 Pride Prom. The youth agency's Safe Place Group for Neurodivergent Youth and Their Families continues to grow and thrive. We had a wonderful Halloween party last week and are excited to have a meet and greet with the new Director of Special Education, Kim Colkin, at our next meeting. The New Milford Media Crew, which is run by Taylor McCafferty, who is the new Youth Diversion and Intervention Program Manager, is looking to grow. She's accepting applications from students 16-years-old and older. They will create reels, posts, and event coverage, share youth stories with the community, and learn real-world media and marketing skills. The youth agency always aims to offer employment opportunities for students in addition to the youth hire to work with Brian Hembrook at her before and after-school program. These are just a few of the things going on at the youth agency. Stay tuned for our brand-new newsletter that is being created to learn more. Thank you.
Moving on to our agenda, I'd like to move that for Item 4A and B, we approve the prior minutes and the tax collector.
We have a second from Councilman Cosgrove. Any discussion on the prior minutes or for the tax collector? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions? Thank you.
Item number six, mayor's comments.
Okay. Real quickly, big congratulations to our new... Real quickly, big congratulations to our newest New Milford Police Officer, Nicola Multigone. And I'm sorry, Nicola, if I mispronounced your last name. He was sworn in today by Noreen Pritchard, our town clerk. He came from the New York Police Department.
Oh.
And has transferred to here, New York City. Yes. So we're excited to have him. So congratulations. Thank you. Also, big congratulations to our New Milford Youth Baseball Softball Nine-Team on their 14-4 win in the semifinals. This coming weekend, they're going to be playing for their championship, so congratulations to them. Big huge congratulations to the New Milford High School Marching Band and Color Guard. First place again finish at the Class Four Open in Southington. Outstanding. So now they're going to be moving on to higher competition. If you haven't had a chance to see their performance of Slither, it's amazing. Do a great job. Go Band and go Guard. Congratulations to the Scatacoke Volleyball Team as they continue on their winning streak, so big congratulations to them. Also want to thank Amari Brandon of End Hunger, Connecticut, as he came this past week to Town Hall. Want to thank State Representative Buckby, State Representative Horn, Katie, the United Way of Western Coastal Connecticut, and the President, Isabella Alameda, yourself, staff, our Social Services Director, Vani Butera, business owner Emily Silva here from New Milford, and Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Parlotta. We were all here discussing ways that we can end hunger, especially expanding access to healthy school meals for every child in Connecticut, which is extremely important to all of us. Congratulations, and we'll have more as we continue with those discussions. I believe this should be something that should happen almost in as of right. Kids that are hungry aren't going to learn. Kids that are hungry aren't going to be the performance that we want. So I'll be bringing updates to the council. Congratulations to the New Milford High School Varsity Men's Soccer and Ladies Field Hockey Teams. They're going to be playing in the States now, but they had a great run up until playoffs and just fantastic games. So thank you to the coaches, parents, and teams. Infrastructure updates, Essex Road, the construction project there. The contractor continues the drainage work on Essex. And when you're pulling out the older drainage that's there, you see the actual deterioration on the bottoms. Some of these drainage jobs that we're doing are 40-years-old, 45-years-old. Some of these roads that we haven't touched, and the drainage is sorely needed. So we're putting those in as well as, once that's completed, we'll do a mill and pave on Essex. And today, they replaced a 42-inch culvert today on the road. Upland Road Construction Project, this is one we talked about before, where we did all that drainage. Now we're doing all the catch basins. We're making sure the lids are, you know, that, Mayor, up your neck of the woods. And they're raising the catch basins to the new road elevation. And then, once that's completed, they're going to do the mill and pave there. Sand Road Bridge Replacement Project, the contractor's installing the wildlife shelf there, because there is wildlife. We want to make sure that it can easily transgress between both sides of the bridge. And they're going to work at the northern abutment, and they're placing riprap on the southern abutment now. Some of the other things that we have going on, too, is the stats from Chief Cerudo, and talk a little bit about our statistics there. Real quick, this year, current status is we have stopped 4,168 motor vehicles. That is an increase so far this year of 1,171 stops from last year.
Really?
Yes.
1,000?
Yep. Accidents have fallen over the year so far. So far, we have 719 this year, with 134 in parking lots. We talked about the reason for the parking lots, that we feel that there are that many. And last year, there were 751 accidents on the road and 124 accidents in parking lots. So if you were to take that differential in parking lot accidents and the reduction on the roadway, it actually comes out to 56 less accidents on our roadways, which is pretty substantial. A big thank you to our New Milford Police Department and also our public. We've talked about this each and every week, is the main drivers for accidents in New Milford are distance driving, driving too close. So that's something self-responsibly we all can do. Make sure that there's a safe distance between us and the car in front of us. Also, destructive driving. And again, some of the things that we continue to do, we've put in flashing lights in our school zone areas. We're also going to be putting in our first traffic light at the intersection of Grove and Hind Hill. That's the final design is at West Cog right now for approval. Once completed, we can go out to bid for that, hopefully looking at mid-spring, early summer. Also, we've installed the sidewalks that you see at the high school, Pettibone, Canterbury School, just to name a few, all in safety. And as we talked about before, these are some of the things when we talk about, as I just spoke about, is the self-responsible way. You can see that awareness is driving those numbers down. So a big thank you to that. And staying on, just as a reminder for the Town Council, the roads that we've done so far this year for drainage work, we've done Wellsville Railroad, we've done Canoway Lake Road North, Prospect Place Extension, Prospect Street, Mill Street, Mallett Lane, Elm Street Extension, Treadwell Avenue, Aspatuck Avenue, Palomino Road, Mare Lane, Erickson Road, Skyview Drive, Upland Road, Erickson and Pumpkin Hill, and Essex Road as we're doing now. We're mill, mill, milling reclaiming? Jeez, I'm... Canoway Lake Road North, Prospect Place, Prospect Place Extension, Prospect Street, Mill Street, Mare Lane, Palomino, Tamarack, Country Farm Lane, Cooper's Lane, Skyview Drive, and Upland. Those are the roads. And then we have our many roads that we do crack seal to help with continuing the life of the road, as well as we've done some additional chip seal as well. We've done the rubberized also. And that's what I pretty much have for Mayor's Comments, Katie.
Any events?
Events? I certainly do.
Well, let's not forget that.
I appreciate you talking about that. First, a big huge thank you to Pat Hembrook from my office.
Yes.
As she coordinates the first Halloween that we have for the youngsters on Saturday with a Halloween parade. And our participating stores downtown had a pumpkin flyer, and it was great to see everybody going into those stores. And we had the monster petting zoo, so thank you to all of the people that were involved in making that such a great success. Big thank you to last night's trunk-or-treat. Want to thank Denise DeMastro from Park and Rec, all the Park and Rec, our CERT team, our New Milford Police Department, and then all the many, many wonderful people that put candy out in their trunks to make it such a successful event. We had over 4,000 people attend, and it was just a wonderful, great event. And might I add, Halloween, Friday night, that's the 31st, make sure that you're nice and safe. Don't jump out into the roadways. Make sure to carry a flashlight. If you're really young, make sure you have parental supervision as well. And make sure after your candy haul that you have a parent check your candy to make sure that it's safe. And then, with events still going to be going on, we just talked about, excuse me, Halloween. We have Bike Safety Day, which is going to be on November 1st from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at Pettibone. And that's where the New Milford Police Department will give tips on how to ride a bike safely. We also took applications as we received a grant for those in need, that need a bike. We want to make sure that no child that would like a bike, and unfortunately may not have the economic means to do so, that were able to provide a bike. And we did it with the help of Walmart a few months ago, and now with this grant, we're able to help some more. I think as of right now, it's about 20.
And helmets, right?
Yep, and helmets and pads, knee pads and pads. On November 1st also, right here on the town green, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., Operation Thanksgiving Food Drive. So it's the United Way and the Women's Club. And they ask for donations if you have some, especially those for Thanksgiving, non-perishable. Also, you take turkeys.
We would take a frozen turkey.
Yep, that will help somebody have a very nice Thanksgiving.
10 to 2 by the man's stand.
Yep. And then we have November 1st, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the library. It's called Gear It Up at the Library. It's a new thing, talking about inventions, inventors. They're going to have all sorts of great programs and classes on that day, so take a look at the New Milford Library website or the Facebook page. And then on November 1st, 12:30 p.m. to 3:30 p.m. at the Silo, the Animal Welfare is having their groovy celebration, a great fundraiser. And full disclosure, I've got one of my dogs from Animal Welfare, and she's a great, wonderful dog. Her name's Chunky. She's actually from Puerto Rico. And if you have it in your heart, or you have the need, or the room in your home, animals could sure use your adoption. Next is Park and Rec is doing their Color Run. This is also on November 1st. Lots going on, 8:30 to 10:00 p.m. at Pettibone. And what that is, is youngsters run around the track, and colored chalk, I believe, is thrown, so your shirt gets nice and rainbow-colored. And parents, Chris, can actually run with their children if they want to.
What are you looking at me for, Chris?
Grandkids, you know, maybe do that.
Grandkids trying to hug.
Yeah, I think I might have to, like, bring my grandkid there.
Just cheering from the side.
Next, also on November 1st, 9:00 a.m. to noon, St. John's Church is doing their Winter Clothing Drive. Big thank you to St. John's, as we know we're getting into the winter season. Then on November 2nd, following their service at 1:00 p.m., Living Stones, which is at the MAX, is doing their Chili and Cookie Cook-Off.
Oh.
Always a great time.
Cookies and chili?
Yep.
Let's make a note of it.
November 5th and 6th, 5:30 p.m. to 8:30 at the MAX. The Youth Agency is doing their Resume and Career Success Fall Program. So if you're a youngster in high school, you want to know about how to do a proper resume, want to talk about a career path, it's a great opportunity to go down to the MAX, 5:30 to 8:30 p.m. The First Congregational Church on November 8th is doing their Whippin' Poof Concert. I actually have seen them in concert. They are amazing, absolutely amazing. On November 8th, 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., the New Milford Grad Parties doing their Designer Bag Bingo. And the proceeds go to help the New Milford Grad Parties. We've talked about it here before. They are really the true heroes that night of when we have graduation night. They are there to make sure that our kids have a safe place to go after graduation. We have Breakfast for Veterans on November 11th at the VFW. That starts at 8:00 a.m. And then we have our VFW Ceremony at 11:00 a.m. right here on the Southern Green. And a big thank you to all of our veterans. November 14th and 15th is the New Milford High School Theater is going to present their play, The Play That Goes Wrong. You've got to come and watch these young students. It's absolutely amazing.
It's great, yeah.
Their first show is on the 14th at 7:00 p.m. The 15th is at 2:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m., and that's at New Milford High School. Then, Chris, I'm going to defer for a moment. November 15th, the Litchfield Irish American Club is sponsoring a Thanksgiving dinner for veterans. Let you talk about that for a moment.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. So for the second straight year, the Litchfield County Irish American Club is doing a free Thanksgiving dinner for any veteran and their plus-one, any guests. We encourage you, it will be at the New Milford VFW at the 15th of November. We'll really just do this, there'll be entertainment, raffles, really just do this to honor your service and your sacrifices, your family. And we had a great showing last year, and everybody had a great time. And we encourage any veteran, if you want to sign up, you can go to lcirishamericanclub.org and sign up through our website, or you can contact me at ccosgrove@newmildfordct.gov, and we'll get you signed up. So we hope to see a lot of veterans out there. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Chris. And before we move on, I just wanted to personally, not as a mayor, but just Pete Bass, 31 Mount Time Road, I want to thank your club for giving Noella's family the funds to allow her to go home. So I can't thank you enough for that. Next is on November 21st and 22nd, the Friends of the Libraries doing their book sale. I always love going to that to pick up a lot of good books for my grandson and I to read, and pretty good price, I got to say.
I hear he's reading already.
Oh, we're trying, we're trying. November 22nd, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at Pettibone is Vintage Mania. If you are a comic book collector, or someone you know, comic book collector, autographs, artistry, old, old toys, this is the place to go. Buck Ovi does a great job with that. Then on the 29th, at 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., the First Congregational Church is doing their Craft Fair. I can't believe we're talking about the 29th already. Run Santa Run is going to be in the morning. And then, 5:30 p.m. on the green is the Annual Tree Lighting. Big thank you to United Methodist Church, as they do the trees that line the green. Small Business Saturday, then, is on the 28th and 29th. That's from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. is doing, the Historical Society is doing their small business crafts. And Weekend at the Museum. Sip and Stroll, December 5th, 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Tickets go fast. So get a chance when it opens up. The Women's Club's going to do their Holiday Bazaar on December 6th, 9:00 a.m. December 7th, Pearl Harbor Observant Ceremony, 9:00 a.m. at the VFW. If you do have a chance, please come out for this wonderful observant ceremony. Thank you to the VFW, the American Legion, as we continue to remember that day. December 9th is Park and Rec's trip to Radio City, Steph Music Hall. So good chance to go there. I think there's still some tickets left.
Rockettes.
Then 13th is the Annual Carol Sing. Right after that, at 7:00, is the Parade of Lights. And then a Christmas concert and live nativity on December 14th, First Congregational Church. Lots going on.
Do you have the Raisin Across America there?
Raisin Across America.
Right, okay. All right.
Well, I'm going to let you talk about it.
Oh, I thought you had it on your list.
I did not see it.
I don't have my...
Well, we'll talk about it next week.
All right, we'll talk about it next week, anyway.
All right.
And I would like to say something to Mr. Cosgrove and Mr. Skelly, because you're going to be leaving us, and I just want everybody to know.
And we have Alex.
And Alex.
And Mayor Gambino.
And I know, really, why are you all leaving? Mary Jane's toughening it out. But I just, it's the corner. Well, you all are just really great, too, have been here for years with all of you. And you're very positive thinkers, and you love everybody. So I'm going to miss you. I already told Alex that I was going to miss you, so I'm not going to tell her again. But Bob, I'm going to miss you.
But I don't do anything.
Oh, well.
I'm going to miss you.
Okay, yes.
Well, we've got something for you, Mayor, in just a minute.
Yeah, we do. Okay.
Okay.
So now...
Next.
Let's see. Now, we're working on Item Number 7, Grant Compliance. I'd like to move that we approve that the New Milford Police Department accept an award of $20,000 from the Department of Justice Office of Community Oriented Policing Services. They're requesting this and wants to approve it. This money would fund the New Milford Police Mental Health Wellness Summit. This is an initiative that's focused on promoting mental wellness for law enforcement officers and their families. It's a family-centered event that will be open to dispatchers, non-sworn personnel, as well as surrounding agencies, to foster regional collaboration in support of officer wellness. The planned activities include mindfulness workshops, stress management, suicide prevention sessions, family-friendly games, and educational discussions. Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Oh, Chris, sorry.
I would just like to say that I think this is yet another example of how forward-thinking this town government and this police department is. I don't know how many other police departments around the country are doing this. I think this is a very important aspect, looking at the mental health of our officers and their families. So I think this is tremendous, and I'm sure Victoria was part of getting this, but I think it's a great program.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Item 7B. I'd like to move that we approve for the CERT Department a grant of $2,500 from Eversource that will fund a replacement of the Resuscitation Antimanican... My gosh, she's finally gone. ...resuscitation antimanican for head-to-toe assessments and CPR mannequin to be used for internal training.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
She's been here a long time. Item number eight, I'd like to move that we approve the following donations for Parks and Rec. This is 250 from Modern Supply, 250 from M&amp;O, 100 from Meadowbrook Gardens, 200 from Kramer & Anderson, 200 from Wetmore's, 100 from... 200 from Kramer &amp; Anderson, 200 from Wetmore's, 100 from MTE, 250 from Jesse's Ice Cream, and 200 from Candlewood Valley Motors.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, and that money was used for trunk-or-treat supplies. It's a past thing now. Uh, now, not, item number nine. I'd like to move that we approve a donation for the 9/11 Committee. It's $500 from Linda and Thomas Sprick for two curved benches to be placed at the 9/11 Memorial and Patriots Way. Any funds in excess which are required to purchase the two benches will be utilized to support the 2026 ceremony, recognizing the 25th anniversary of the September 11th, 2001 attacks, and continued support of annual ceremonies.
Second.
Thank you, in a second. And as a reminder, we approved a, a bunch of these donations at the last meeting, and this is an additional one. Uh, looking forward to these beautiful benches. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions? Thank you.
Item number 10. Uh, I would like to move that we approve the following appointment for the New Milford Film Commission. This would be Sherry Lynn Gunn, uh, for, for a term of October 27th, 2025, through January 31st, 2028.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number 11. I'd like to move that we go into executive session, inviting Attorney Randy DeBella and John Tower. I don't see John Tower.
Yes, I do.
Nope, okay. This will be regarding the McBriarty versus Kimberly-Clark Corporation, New Milford Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Commission, and the Town of New Milford. Do you have a second?
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So we're going into executive session. So we'll ask, uh, the public if they could just wait outside, and then we'll call back in when we come out of executive session.
Randy, keep it short.
Thank you. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Oga. Update from the finance.
I apologize. I am here to discuss and present a first quarter report of the current fiscal year. So, starting with the revenue side of the budget, three months into the fiscal year, you know, thankfully, not much to report. We are trending similar to our prior year situation. So, all departments perform as expected. Land use department is already outperforming the straight line expectations due to some, you know, expensive permits that came through. Interest income is on target as well. Interest rates are where we want them to be. They're still above 4%. As you know, for the next three months, we will see a bit of a decline in our interest income. That's due to the drop in our balances, which is normal for us. We did have an influx of tax collections when the first installment of taxes was due. So, that yielded higher collections in interest income. Now, as we draw from that, from those collections to meet our operating obligations, the balances will drop, you know, generating small interest. But overall, we are trending where we expect it to be. So, not much to report on revenue side. And if you have any questions, I will take those.
Any questions on revenues? Okay. Oga, expenditures?
Expenditures, again, similar. First quarter into the fiscal year, we are trending where we want to be. No significant issues have been brought up or reported by the departments. So, you know, staffing levels are adequate. We are seeing pretty much, you know, normal turnover, staff turnover, but nothing that really will scream a red flag for our budgetary performance. So, so far, no outliers, and we're just, you know, moving forward through the fiscal year.
Any questions for Oga? Thank you. Thank you, Oga.
Good job.
Appreciate the update.
Good job.
Next is Jack. We're going to talk a little bit about Old Boardman Bridge.
Good evening. I'm going to say much. Supposedly going to be Jason Galant from Wright Pierce. I think you remember that probably a couple of years ago, the town council granted us money from the ARPA funds to do a study on the bridge. We hired, we went through an interviewing process, and Councilman Francis was on and out with us, working with us. And we hired Wright Pierce to conduct studies of the bridge and to look how much it would cost and what the options were as far as renovating it and making it useful for a walkable pedestrian, pedestrian bridge over the Muscatonic connecting the, near Route 7 on the west side to the east side and making it so that people can go back and forth. Wright Pierce has probably about ninety, ninety-five percent, maybe ninety-five to ninety-seven percent done with the study. We're working on right now the application for a LOTSIP grant.
It's going to be submitted on what day?
November 12th, is it? Yeah, November 12th.
And there'll be no problem with making that date, right?
No, we're, that part is ready. We are now soliciting letters of support. The more letters that we can show, the better chance we have for that to get the grant. If you go by, we have done work, because we want to demonstrate to the, to WestCOG and those who evaluate these applications that we were committed. So, if you go by, we've actually done some work there. You'll see the trees have been removed. The trees are part of the problem for the abutments on the bridge. We put, we recently put, I think recently as of last week, put some fencing there to make it safer to walk around the bridge. And we'll continue to do projects there. But our, the big expenditure, we're looking to get a LOTSIP grant. And we've put together, we had done, we had applied last year. New Milford put in two applications. We, we got one for the Hine Hill Road Grove Street Light. We didn't get the second one, which was this. They, I had spoken with them. They gave me some feedback on our application. I believe they, Mayor Bass also spoke with them. They gave him some feedbacks, which he sent on to us so that we could improve our application. And we've given that to Wright Pierce. So, the application will include the comments that they gave us. So, with that, I don't want, I know we're late, so I'm going to get out of the way and let Jason give his presentation.
Good evening, members of the council, mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to present. I will just scroll through a quick presentation here. My name is Jason Galant, here on behalf of Wright Pierce, supporting Jack. So, as far as the overview here, we'll kind of talk a little bit about the project, the current status, as well as progress you've made and the next steps. The overview is your beautiful bridge here, 188-foot span. It's called the lenticular truss because of the eye shape that it makes when you look at it from the side. It's one of three remaining in the state. It has been out of service since the 1980s, and there have been a couple of recent inspections, one in 2015, about 10 years ago. And then we did a supplemental inspection on the bridge last summer in 2024. Our goal here is to preserve the bridge and to have it be serviceable for pedestrian use for a 50- to 75-year life with scheduled maintenance, because it's an old iron steel bridge on a 25-year cycle. Looking at the current status, our role, so we did conduct an inspection of the bridge back in 2024. That included a combination of drone inspection with a scan of the bridge, some hands-on inspection. And those inspections allowed us to develop some conceptual repairs and conceptual costs associated with that. And then we got into design development in 2025. So, that, that file review has to do with reviewing prior inspections and reports that are on file here in the town, as well as at the state level, site survey and scanning of the bridge. There are no plans for this bridge. So, effectively, we've recreated a model of the structure to be able to rehabilitate it and understand where it's moved, how it's twisted. The photo is here on the, on the right. That's the northwest corner where you can see there's some deterioration. The structure itself at that portal has settled and rotated, resulting in some racking of the bridge. And where it circled in the bottom right, there's been some displacement of the abutment. So, with that, we put together a summary of findings that memorialized changes in the structure since 2015. Thankfully, the structure, although is in need of repair, is mostly stable. And our recommendation is to consider a repair as opposed to a replacement of the bridge. More on current status. Are inspection considered what's called a component inspection to national bridge inspection standards? Those are condition one to five. And overall, on a, on a condition scale of zero to nine, zero meaning the bridge is failed, nine meaning it's brand new. It's in a condition of four or, or poor. So, the four primary areas to address are the deck, which is not original, but does need replacement again. There are some isolated steel repairs to the primary trusses, as well as to some of the support members that connect the trusses underneath. There's abutment reconstruction. So, the stone masonry abutments will be reconstructed to take some of that damage from settlement, drainage, root intrusion that's happened over time to shore those up. And then there's the paint, which needs to be abated and then recoded. And part of our study was we did do an environmental assessment. There have been some hazardous materials found. They are in the paint system common to this time, lead and PCBs, but mitigated. It, it common for these types of structures with standard practices to mitigate that. So, because of the good, or the, it's, it's in poor condition from a deck standpoint, and it's unserviceable right now. But the overall good condition of the structure for its age, it was determined that it is serviceable for rehabilitation, and that's where we are now. So, we put together a project opinion of cost to be able to understand where we'd be for grant funding. The LOTSIP grant that Jack mentioned is a $4 million cap. So, we're going to apply for the max based on where we think the project costs are going to come in. We've looked at an initial inspection or at the cost of initial inspection back in 2024, we were about 3.8 million. We looked at some concrete repairs and contingencies. When we came through concept design, the estimate pushed up close to 5 million. Through discussions and refinement of the design, we're closer to 4.25 million is what we're thinking the cost of the project will be for construction. And the next steps are to go after that grant funding, get, and that, that LOTSIP is, you know, it's through WestCOG, and then that's ultimately through the Department of Transportation is the overseer of that. And then we'll be going through the deep permit approvals related to work around the river, and then final design, bid documents, and then get into bridge construction, similar, if folks were familiar with the process, to the Lover's Leap Bridge back several years ago. So, with that, the proposed improvements, we've got sort of a graphical rendering. The bridge will very much look the same. We're going to try to take some of the twist out of it gently. It'll be recoded, a new deck. And then there's been some discussion of some, some planters on the bridge along with the new trail surface. There'll be some new screening that'll be put at the abutments to upgrade a little bit on the fence. There'll be bollards likely instead of some of the stones. And this is just sort of concept level. There, there can be different ornamental features that are considered over time. But the intent is to make sure we're keeping vehicles off the bridge and making it for pedestrians only so that they can then connect up to the adjacent River Trail network. There is a, a signal active now at the railroad that'll be reactivated as part of this crossing, and there'll be coordination that goes along with that through the design. So, that's all I had. I just want to say thank you. I can leave the presentation with the council. My contact information's here. And I think that if there's any questions, I'm certainly glad to take them.
So, the 4.25 million cost, is that all in except for the ribbon, the kind of ceremony?
So, that's construction costs, and then there are other, what we, the soft costs or professional costs that the, the town or whoever the grant sponsor is usually would pay those. So, we're under contract for some preliminary design now. We've been in discussions with Public Works about getting under contract for final design. So, they, they will pay for construction costs. And then there's typically soft costs on top of that for the design piece, and then the construction administration piece of that. So, we had some rough numbers. We were talking about another, I think, 750 on top. So, it's probably a $5 million job all in when we consider the design phase, construction phase, services, some contingency, and the project proper.
Construction length, how long, start to finish, roughly?
So, I apologize. The answer is it depends. But depending upon how the paint process goes and time of year for when the project gets advertised and gets built, it could be a single season. and time of year for when the project gets advertised and gets built, it could be a single season. It's likely to be a two-season project, based on the type of repairs that have to be done, and then encapsulating the structure to remove the coating, reapply the coating, and then likely do the deck after. So there's some demolition, mostly the deck. There's abutment work that needs to be done, and that usually has to be done during low flows, and so we're talking, you know, a summer season. And then there's work that can be done off-season that doesn't impact the resource areas, but painting in the winter is not great either. So like, could be a single, but likely a two-season project.
The last question is, would the finished result look something similar to what we see at Lover's Leap?
Similar, yeah. And, right, so, and that's up for discussion, but right, we're showing a...
This was silver.
Yes, and that's why we're, right, so there's different, we, we're showing what's called a federal gray, because there's a couple of different paint colors on that bridge, so some of that's up for discussion. Councilor Francis is right. What's out there now is silver, not red like Lover's Leap, but that's a detail to be ironed out later. Yep.
I can't wait to get to that point where that's what we have to worry about.
Yes.
Sure.
So Jack, will you be overseeing this project?
Yeah.
You'd be like the corporate works for the project?
Yeah, we'll be, the public works will be overseeing the project.
Uh, so you mentioned paint, right, removing paint and lead, whatever, you know, the timeframe, because it was done years ago. There won't be any above cost that's been incorporated in removing all the paint?
The, the paint removal and replacement cost is in our opinion of cost.
And what about if you find damage into the metal and the steel?
So through our inspection, we've gone out and we've measured elements. We've met, right, so that is a good point. Sometimes you find when you take paint away, additional corrosion. Through the inspection that we've done, we've characterized some steel or iron that'll need to be repaired and replaced, and we've added contingency in for that, in the case that, as you're removing, that you're, you're not overexposing.
Like contingency, is that $750 you mentioned?
No, it's within the, it's within the 4.25. Yeah, it's within the scope of the...
What's the, what's the deck material going to be made of?
It's likely a FRP, like a composite. We want to put a lightweight deck on there that's going to also be resilient, so, yep.
And when you repaint, what kind of a paint would you use on that?
It's usually a three-part urethane, epoxy urethane paint. Yeah, that's the, the modern bridge type of paint.
So that, that, along with the decking, is timeframe of how long would that last?
Typically 40 years, but when you have a bridge that's already, you know, from the 1880s, it's likely that, that's why we put a 20-year maintenance cycle, because bridges like this, typically you're inspecting them every two to five years for pedestrian bridges, and you might find that repairs would go 25 years, so we've tried to program that in. But oftentimes, we're getting 40, 50 years out of a deck, because it'll have, you know, the benefits. Not a lot of chlorides, not a lot of components that can be affected if you're not salting it. And so building it with resilient, lightweight materials that will not overstress the bridge, and then maintaining it over time.
So one last question, real quick. No, I know we're trying to get the grant for $4 million, right? Does the, is there a fund that the Boardman Bridge has in the kitty or a whole, or no?
Yeah, but nowhere near.
No, I know, I understand that. I'm just saying.
There's like 10 grand or something.
Yeah, there's probably...
So say hypothetically, we don't get the full grant. All right, just say we get...
Well, then we'd have to step back and rethink this.
Okay.
There are people who, who are interested in making donations.
Okay, so that was my, my question is, funding the additional cost after the grant we opened up to? Now, I don't know if this is under the parameter, but would someone, would that fall in the waste management?
It'd be impossible.
So I'm just thinking outside the box about how to fill that void.
And then to answer your additional question, so I did ask Jason, what happens if we did nothing? And now we have to take the bridge down?
Yes.
How much does that cost?
Yeah, so it's, it's, yeah, it's going to be in the $3 million to $4 million to take it down by the time...
No, no, I, I certainly don't want to take it down.
No, no, I'm just saying, so it's going to be one of the...
Right, if we don't get the grant, we better find it somewhere.
Right, we gotta find it somewhere. So, no, it's a, it's a part of history in New Milford, and I think we should keep it. I'm just trying to think of financial part of how we're going to fill that void and the, and the gap and stuff. And so I want to make sure, and I don't know, Pete, under the parameters of the language of the waste management, are we able to use...
Use for recreation.
Yeah, this would be recreation, it goes to the trail.
Okay.
But just to...
Because that's the goal.
Speak to what you asked about. There's a timeframe here, you know. First of all, if we were lucky enough to get the grant and it was less, we have to look forward and say that every month that goes by, that something is not done, the price goes up.
Oh, no.
Everything, you know that.
Very proactive, sure.
So having people who are willing to be donors, who are, who would love to have this bridge made, so it will be part of our River Walk, and, and it just could be wonderful. We're on sort of a fast track every day, you know.
And there may be other funding opportunities too. It's a historic bridge.
So are we here today to try to, to say yes, to try to go forward with the grant?
All we're doing today is, is we are going to be applying again for the Lots of Grant, to see what we get. But today, just to give an update to the town council, we did take ARPA money to get this to where the state it is now. Obviously, I've stated this before, this would be a linchpin to that corner there. It's, it, you know, abuts Sega Meadows, which is part of our riverfront, which is part of our, you know, the whole system when it comes, when it comes to, to that, so I think it'd be a great opportunity.
And how long do you see the grant for turnaround? I don't know how long grants take.
So, yeah, so this one is, we'll know for June, so it'll be available in the next fiscal year, so July 1st. And if we're not successful, we really apply.
2027, this is going to be done?
This could be a 2027, 2028 project, if the stars align, yes.
Any other, Mayor, or Mary Jane?
What's the end use for this bridge in relation to Lover's Leap? In other words, are we going to increase parking? How access, how people are going to use it?
So great, great question, Mayor. Right across the street, as you know, like where this bridge is, across the regular bridge, which we're going to end up doing. That way, we have, we, yes, we have all that acreage that's there as well, part of the park system.
Parking now, I know there's never been main tang for...
So that's something we would be working towards, once we do this, as part of the plan for additional parking, because there will be lots of people that will come and want to be...
Nothing on the other side?
Not more than there is now.
Yeah, on the other side, just a small parking spot.
This will provide more parking for that.
Yep.
Because right now, if you try and park in that lot, and you try and get over the Sega Meadows across the Boardman Bridge, that's dangerous.
And I also think, Mayor, this would be a good component. As you know, the restaurant that's there goes, has had trouble having longevity there. I think with the demand that the people have to go to a bridge like this, being able to walk on it, being able to enjoy it, all the flowers that will be on there, I think it'll be a destination point, which could help solidify a business, their viability there as well. Yep. Mary Jane and Alex?
What exactly do we use the ARPA money for, the bridge?
We use the ARPA money for to do the design?
Professional services for inspection, costing, preliminary design, evaluation of the structure, survey. Our contract is...
Look, I've, Mary, I don't want to say I'd be wrong. Say it off the top of my head.
It started there, yeah, with this, yeah, it's just over $100,000 is where we're at.
If we did nothing, what, what happened? I mean, we don't want it to fall in the river because of the environmental, but I mean, how close are we to that possibly happening?
It's not going to fall tomorrow.
It's not like...
It's not imminent, it's not an imminent danger of collapse.
Yes, but not collapse, Mary Jane, but it has a danger in that it is coming apart. You know, in other words, paint, that's the worst thing, as Jason said, is that it's terrible paint, and it's falling into the river, and we don't want Bob to get upset, because it's his scenic river from there up. Yeah, not, not so far.
It's, it's not, yeah, it's, it's not actively flaking, but there's, you know, it's, there's nothing protecting, there's not a protection system under it that's catching paint that might flake, so.
Alex?
So then it's, it will be ours to maintain, correct?
Yes.
So it adds to your plate board? Okay, so then it's going to affect the budget once it's done, because you're going to have to work with the parking, which isn't in here in the plan yet, right? Increased parking, and then the yearly maintenance of the bridge.
We don't spend, we don't spend very much on Lover's Leap, right? I mean, it's, it's a small thing to monitor. Check it, we had a little bit of money for paint and things like that, but overall, the cost on a bridge like that is minimal. It's not like, even, even a bridge that you finish and rebuild, inspect them, things like that, but typically, there's not a lot of cost once they're repaired.
It's man hours though, too, so that's all, okay.
Any other questions for Jason or Jack? Thank you, guys. Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, may, could I? So, oh, I just, I didn't, I would just like to express my thanks to Councilman Thomas, Councilman Skelly, Councilman Cosgrove, and Councilman Gambino. You've been very supportive to Public Works, and you've been very supportive of me. I thank you for everything you've done. I've enjoyed my time getting to know you and interacting with you. Thank you.
That's what I was going to say, right.
Hey, Bob, I'm, I'm eligible.
Thank you, Jack.
Let me say, this time, I'm very fortunate to have you running our Public Works.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Jason.
All right. Good night, thank you.
So item 13B, I'd like to move that we approve the creation of the Boardman Bridge Rehabilitation Temporary Committee.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, item number 13C, I'd like to move that we appoint the following members to the Boardman Bridge Rehabilitation Temporary Committee. That would be Catherine Francis, Kent Fletcher, Bob Gambino, Timothy Clark, and I, let's do those, and then I'll say what I forgot to say. Wait, there's more. But wait, there's more. I, I'd have to suspend the rules. I guess I could do that, right? I could suspend the rules right now to add...
We can, hang on, hang on.
That's what I want to do.
Randy, is it okay that we add two names to this list that's here?
Do they know it?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, they know.
Okay, thank you.
Do I have to suspend, make the motion to suspend the rules? That's what I...
Add the existing item on the agenda.
Right, so I was going to make these existing, so then do that.
Okay.
Is that all right? Okay.
Is there a second to that first motion?
I did, but I, I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not doing it yet. I'm going to just do this. Item C, it's got four people on it, and we're going to vote on that.
Yes, there's...
We need a second. I second that.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Any discussion on the names presented on this agenda for the Boardman Bridge Rehabilitation Committee?
He said four, but it's five.
There's four, Mayor.
Four on this list.
There's four. Any discussion? All who's in favor?
October 27th of 2025 through January 31st, 2026.
So that's been approved.
Okay.
Next, we're going to do...
Okay, now, I would like very much to suspend, make a motion that we suspend the rules to add an item.
Any discussion? All who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And what I'd now like to do is move that we add to this committee of the Boardman Bridge Rehabilitation two people. That'd be Walter Bayer, term of 10/27/25 through January 31st, 2026, and Bill Devlin, again, the same term, 10/27/25 to January 31st, 2026.
Any discussion? All who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions? Thank you.
Also, you know what? We don't have Lisa. Oh, Christ. This wasn't, I got to suspend the rules one more time. Moving to suspend the rules. Her name wasn't...
Why don't you just unsuspend and adjourn the motion?
Unsuspend.
And add the extra person, so there'll be three names.
Yes, okay.
Walter Bayer, William Devlin, and Lisa Aronson.
Okay, Lisa Aronson, 10/27/25 to January 31st, 2026. Yes, thank you.
Any discussion? All who's in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions?
And Mayor, I just want to say one thing. I had a discussion to get together with these people, and what you were talking about, what, how it would be done, how it would... So Kent Fletcher immediately said, Bob, that the area over there would make a great parking lot, you know? And what he also said was, if we had a small kiosk that would be sort of like a miniature, the wooden, do you remember the wooden bridge that used to be there? And he said, with information about the bridges, how they came, you know, how they were long, they've been here, et cetera, et cetera. And he said, maybe it could be a, you know, big enough, there'd be a porta potty in there to make it easy for people when they park to go up and get across the bridge. And Lisa, who we know is chairman of the River Walk, just can't say enough about this, because it's going to open things up to get people going, because our River Walk's going to go down south, right? So it's, it's got a lot of people behind it, and I think the right people to discuss, and you, because you're the man of the river. So I'm very happy about it.
See?
Got my name on there.
There you go, that's right. All right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
One more, right?
Anything else? Economic development?
Yeah.
All right, just real quick, unemployment statistics, the state of Connecticut is at 3.8%. New Milford total that could be employed is 15,875. We have 15,294. There's 581 people unemployed in New Milford. We don't want to have anyone. That brings it to 3.7%, which is below the state average. Want to congratulate the opening of Raven's Bake House, which is on 50 Bank Street. It's a new bakery, coffee shop. I had a chance to go in there and wish the owner tremendous luck, and had tasted some of her baked goods, and they're pretty fantastic. Want to also congratulate Retro Remix, which is on 4 Railroad Street, for their opening. They do vintage clothes, home goods, and beauty accessories. We had our first food truck festival, which was on the 18th of October. We had 11 food trucks there, and a big thank you to Kristen Gizzy from Lynchville Crossings, as we had it there. Also was the Touch a Truck event as well, on the same day. And it was great to see all the people coming out, and looking forward to a successful year two of our food truck festival. Connecticut Small Business, their center, success stories. One is protecting your business from cyber threats. These you can find online. There's online classes for that. They're also asking for a small business credit survey, which you can go on the website, SBDCCT, and you can see, it's a 12-minute survey. They want to know about how you can access credit. Is there additional credit funding sources that you would need or want? And this is a good opportunity to let them know. There is also a Business Lending Expo, which is going to be on November 13th, 9:00 a.m. to noon. And this is going to be at 3 University Drive from 9:00 a.m. to noon, and that's at West Con. It's a great opportunity to discuss working capital, short and long-term financing, fixed assets, options, and more. There'll be a lot of lenders there, including the SBA, so a great opportunity to do there. On October, or, sorry, October 28th is the Tiger Shark Tank Event, and that is being done by M&amp;T Bank, and that's where you can watch virtually new businesses come in and look for money, as you would see Shark Tank, when that is done nationally as well. So it's a great opportunity to do that. And then a real big opportunity with the Women's Business Development Council. Their updates of what they're doing is Reputation Made Leadership Event, and that is going to be Thursday, November 6th, 11:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and that's at One University Place at Stanford. And that's a great opportunity to communicate with purpose, and you understand today's crowded media landscape, and how to tell your story, your business story, and resonate with your customers and the public. Also, November 12th, 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., this is at 305 Fulton Street in Bridgeport, is the Women's and Business Summit, and thank you to M&amp;T Bank and Wilmington Trust. And this is a half-day event that offers valuable networking... this is a half-day event that offers valuable networking opportunities with accomplished women from diverse industries. It's a great chance to come down and network. On November 18th, the WBDC is doing their meetup in Stanford, another great networking opportunity. There's Coffee and Conversation in New London, for those that may have regional or state businesses, with some logistics in that area, that's a great networking opportunity as well. And then there's upcoming classes, Digitizing Your Documents. This is done at their virtual classroom, and you can check this out at the WBDC website. That's pretty much what I got. Katie?
Great. Well?
I'm on the floor.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.